Good afternoon, I'm about to call this meeting together. At this time, McCormick County Council special call meeting here at the beautiful Savannah Lakes Rec Complex. So, at this time, I'm asking Ms. Barnes if you are in motion and Mr. Cook if you're available.
Well, we thank you for the gathering here today, who already know the purpose, as in our touch hearts, minds, souls, and spirits, so that we can come together and do what's best for our county, and hear our residents and the issues that they bring before us, and if we as council can do what we can do about those issues. We thank you for the gathering, we thank you for everyone that's here, bless and touch all those across this county, this state, and this nation. Your sons and women, we pray. Amen.
Amen. What would I say to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? At this time, this meeting is going to be the role of this.
Barney.
President.
Charles Dennis.
President.
Chuck Cook.
President.
Jackie Brown.
President.
David Moore.
President.
James E. Torres.
President.
We do have a form that designed to handle our decision item, which is orders twenty-five oh six, an order submitted in order thirteen oh seven, to increase the solid waste fee to be paid to the cost, to the cost of the management and disposal of solid waste generated within McCormick County from eighty dollars to a hundred dollars per year. This is council secretary, while I'm here.
Sir.
First and second, excuse me, any further discussion? I would just mention, this fee has not been increased in many many years, and majority folks have used the recycling center, so that waste goes from there to a transfer station in Hville County, and then from there is loaded on tractor trailer trucks and transferred to south at the Savannah Riverside in Aiken County, most processes and kind of maybe sales. So, there's been a huge increase in the cost to hauling this waste those distances, but that's kind of why we're asking for a twenty dollar increase to cover some of that cost. So, all in favor of the increase right here, please? It carries, this time, we will be in and into our town hall meeting. Mr. Cook, you want to speak? You know, he loves his child words, but we'll give him the mic in just a second, but I will personally, as you just, I want to introduce everyone, have everyone introduce themselves to you folks, we don't have our name tags tonight. Ms. Barnes, I apologize for that, but we pull this together, kind of short others, but I think it's important, everyone, we'll start with Mr. James, he's our new administrator, and he's not aware, but I'd like for him to take about three minutes to introduce himself. Since he's the new guy, I wonder if he, I've just been recently hired in as administrator, and I'm sure he might have a couple words to share with you folks about how excited he is to be here representing McCormick County. Mr. Uchra.
Point of order, Mr. Uchra.
Oh.
Point of order, Mr. Uchra, we need to formally adjourn the special call meeting before we go into a town hall meeting. I still need the community to be here.
Second.
We got a first, second, no further discussion. All in favor of the town hall meeting? Now, we can begin. We're going to get this table over here, short. Go ahead.
I think I have about sixty seconds left now, so I'll make this, make this quick. I'm James Upchurch, I'm excited to be your new county administrator here in McCormick County. The last two weeks, this is day of, it's day twelve now, the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity to meet with all of our department heads, this past week individually with our council members, and then next week we'll be at the state conference, and the week after that, and be individually with our local community groups. So, I'm excited to be here as part of this town hall, I know we have several more scheduled throughout the county over the next couple of weeks. And I'll be working with Crystal to make sure that we're communicating as effectively as possible, sharing this video on social media and online platforms, to make sure those who can't attend tonight will still have access to the meeting. I will have cards to hand out at a later time, and I look forward to hearing your comments tonight, learning more about McCormick County, and working with you, and I look forward.
Thank you. Mr. James.
Good evening, I am Charles Jennings, representing District Four, right chair. I'd like to say thank you, S L B, for inviting us out here to town hall meeting. It's great, showing how highly cared by government, and government is no stronger than the people there represent.
Mr. Moore.
David Moore, Council District One.
Good to hear. I'm Bernie Handby, the chairman of McCormick County, and I too, as Mr. James says, want to particularly thank the staff and administration and the residents of this great community for allowing us to come before y'all. And typically, in the past, we used to take county council meetings on the road because of the technology and we're on YouTube and those type of things. We felt it'd be best to start doing town hall meetings throughout entire county, to give y'all the opportunity to share with us your issues and concerns. And this meeting is not about county council, or, you know, it's not official, now that we're out of our official, you know, taking care of our official meetings, this meeting is for y'all to ask those questions. We might not have all the answers, but we definitely record any, and working together, we will resolve some of the many issues that this county faces, so thank you to everyone for coming out on such a hot day, and this has a very good meeting, and I'm looking forward to it, being here with you and for you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very proud and happy and fortunate to be the District Three County Councilman. We may be the smallest district in terms of total area, but based on the latest population counts, we are certainly the most numerous. So, I'm very proud to be here, I'm very proud to represent you, and look forward to answering your questions to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Jackie Brown, McCormick County District Five, echo all the comments that have been said before. Thank you.
We definitely want to thank Ms. Barnes for setting this up, and the technologies staff that helped set the electronics that up, don't want to forget them, so she does a great job for us. And she, I don't think she's probably got enough to hand out tonight, but she took the time to give our McCormick County government things to know, less us, less the administration. She's saying on this, please, be interested in, if you haven't signed up, to get all our announcements and alerts, please get this from her, and it tells you step by step how to sign up to get everyone any notices that she sends out for us. Our regular meetings, official call meetings, some of our board meetings, E T C, and planning, and a couple others that she sends out the notices to the public. And speaking of the public notices, it's started, it's working very well, the public part of our county council meeting, which is on the third Tuesday of each night, not each night, but each, each month, we give you the opportunity, as you come in, to sign up to speak for three minutes, and that's working out real well. We are just, we felt the need to be a lot more transparent, we need the public to follow it more, we're very excited about James wanting to be seen more out in the public, and so his door is open, I have a lot of S L B talent, not only S L B talent and expertise, calling me, wanting to get involved in the county's advisory positions and those things which we will be working on in the near future, to make things better, this is a great county, we're really proud to be in. The process, the process, I think, we're going to probably say, we did want it, Mr. Moore is able to tell, I have it real well, so tonight, we're going to try doing, I think, you guys can line up at the mic that want to ask us questions, I ask that you sort of keep the questions brief as possible, depending on how many, you know, how many folks want to ask us that. We well aware that the number one question that we all asked overall for goodness, the water situation we find ourselves in, and we don't have a lot of answers, we have some, but there's, after we, after the meeting and the closing part, I've got a couple ideas, I think, that we're going to try to balance out and see if we can make the, get some better answers than what we have here tonight. So, at this time, we'll start taking questions, this is y'all's meeting. Yes, sir. I'd like for you, just please say your name, and then give us your question.
Hello. My name is Ruler Ferreira, I'm with Clemson University. I went to the cap, thank you for taking me again. I bring to you guys a very important issue, which is our farmers market pavilion. I built two farmers market pavilion, one in Donalds and one in Cowan Falls. I needed very little government money, was many donations from organizations, and a few from individuals. We have a need for a pavilion in McCormick County. We started a door mill in two thousand sixteen, that was my first farmers market that I opened, before I started this program, I had four more years until I retired. This is my last infrastructure project in my resume. So, we have a potential to have an eighty by forty pavilion, and next to the town center, is that the word that's being included, the farmers market is a. We have a chance to acquire for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant with a max, which is for this association software, and I can get that twenty-five thousand dollars. The city promises something, and I will have to other big donors in Abbeville, McCormick, Ringwood, Anderson, Ringwood, Columbia. So, I'll be chasing all those individuals who believe in local food. McCormick has driven our farmers market region, so we usually have sixteen vendors in McCormick, and all these vendors use the Abbeville, to Cowan Falls, to Donalds, even to Ringwood. McCormick became kind of like a hub of all these vendors, because, and most of, because of you guys at Savannah Lakes, that has been misreporting us so greatly. Thank you so very much for all your support from our farmers market. So, with the chance we have now to build an eighty by forty pavilion, we have a chance to double the amount of vendors that we have in the city. To stick up on this, your vendor produce farmer, and then it's hot, ninety-five degrees Fahrenheit, and it has hunk of it, like the water, like, like fluid, so it's just not easy, and then you bring all this stuff to your truck, and then put a canopy there.
So, what's your question?
Yeah.
You're supposed to be asking a question.
This is the town hall, do you, do you have a presentation that you could pass out at a later time, because this is their time.
The question, yes.
Yes, sir.
Do I keep your support to build the farmers market pavilion?
Yes, sir. I thank, I thank the blessing of you, we have very exciting presentation that you presented to council, and you can go back to YouTube, you get all of his details of what he's trying to do, and he takes a lot of pride in his work, so, yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Next person.
This is everybody. No, you still, you did a good job, man.
I have two short questions.
Yes, sir.
My first question is, I know you rented the place on twenty-eight, and I'd like to know what kind of progress is being made to get that open, and what they're going to be producing?
You're talking about microtech, the.
I don't know what it is, but I know it's speculative, it's late fall for five years.
Yes, sir. If you pass, yeah, I passed by there just about daily, they pour the concrete, there's probably five trucks out there presently, they're doing electrical, the plumbing, as to say, those food additive, a German company we signed a contract with, and so it, I'm not sure, tell you, could you hurry it up?
They're supposed to be opening in October.
Oh, right, and what are they going to be producing?
They're going to be producing additives, mainly for animal feed.
Okay. The other question I have is, I know you sold a piece of property down in Plum Branch, to a company that's going to be creating a solar field.
That's correct.
Have, have they cleared along, and when do they expect to plant the solar field?
From March, March income, the last update that we got, it's going to be probably a three to five year project to get that in place, and it's all, it's out way outside parts of Price's Mill Road, is paper company land that they owned previously, and it's a great location for it, it's not like the one that you see, you know, out in the hour, it's like three cent, maybe two to three, or two and a half, so it's secondary, really, some of the land is cleared, but yeah, that's basically really, already just in and into a perimeter.
Okay, my third question is, we get our power from Little River Electric Company.
Right.
It gets its power from Sandy Cooper, who got together with Stan to build a nuclear power plant down south somewhere, that never opened, and now has an eight point two billion dollar debt, which is going to be paid by the rate payers. Is there any way we can get out of getting electric from Sandy Cooper, or Little River, Little River Electric, so we don't have to pay that debt?
South Carolina has a system in which areas of responsibility and service are assigned by the Public Service Commission, and the area in which we reside has been assigned to Little River Electric Corporation. If we were to request being taken out from that service area of Little River, their area of responsibility would be so substantially reduced that their viability, the continued viability would probably be in question. So, I don't, I don't think there's, there's much of a chance at all of getting a different provider. Now, having said that, there are other things that are going on in the legislature and in the State House that may revise that assignment system, particularly with respect to the need to generate a lot more electric power for data centers. That may change in the next couple of years, but we'll have to wait and see what happens and see what, what legislature, the legislature passes.
Thank you.
I do know from a personal, friend of mine who's actually, they have reopened that project and started back, putting that reactor back together, they're going to complete that project. And I want to ask them how they're paying for it, I hope there's not another couple, several billions, but I do know because of the needs for powers, Mr. Cook mentioned, that project has started back, it was abandoned, but they, they are working out there. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Fox, I'm a S L B resident. I have two questions. One, at some point in the past, you heard that there would be an engineering personnel in the county to handle our runoff grading issues for new builds. Here in S L B, we have an architectural committee that used to review, but they didn't have an engineer, so it was turned back to the county. Has that position been filled?
We don't have, we're not trying to fill a position, our task is to, Mr. Upchurch, if he's got a data home, we get our consulting engineer firm to do that grade study for us.
But what about every new house that goes in, that has to have drainage evaluation, water runoff, so it doesn't go in laboring lots? My understanding was someone had to reevaluate that for each case.
The problem, the problem that we have here in the village is that the builders didn't like, the architectural, the U C C reviewing drainage systems in the village, so they went to court and got an injunction to stop us from doing that. Now, the only, the only thing that remains with respect to a review of drainage for individual homes is the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the county's building department, which means that those plans have to go to the building department for approval, and they can only disapprove of those on an extremely limited basis. Now, as most of you are aware, we have a new development that Capitol wants to build on Garden Drive, that is a, I think, a twenty unit townhouse developer, that is large enough, it impacts enough land, but that approval must go to the state, used to be called D E C, I'm not sure the appropriate acronym for the new organization, but that has, that has to be reviewed by, by D E C. Now, if you look at some of the other legal requirements, normally, the review of that would be done by the planning commission, because that normally involves a rezoning of the land. In this particular case, since all the land in the village is planned development, and since planned development already includes townhouse development, as we have townhouses in the village, the planning commission is, is probably not going to make a decision, it doesn't need to make a decision on, on that issue, because it doesn't involve any rezoning. Now, having said all of that, if the planning commission is not going to make a decision, the county council is not going to make a decision. And that, that really means that the council is neither council nor depart, the building department are going to have an opportunity to turn this thing down based on the drainage situation. And the same applies to individual housing units. It doesn't go to the planning commission, it doesn't go to council, and if a certificate of occupancy is issued by the building department, and that is sufficient, and it's very low, we can do nothing.
So, there's nothing we can change in the county council guidelines, because there's people that are being, not myself, but there's people being impacted, with new housing builds and water runoff significantly onto their property.
There is a significant problem with that throughout the county, but particularly in S L B, with the amount of development that we have going on, the amount of properties that are being cleared, we've exacerbated the drainage problem that we've never had until the last three, four, five years.
So, would that be something we have to do this?
We have discussed with the building department, opportunities that we have to amend the existing county ordinances. If you look at the existing county ordinances, there is a requirement in the existing ordinances for the review of any changes that are made in the drainage of any property in the county that seeks to neighbors. And that, and that review, that review is done by the, by the Soil and Water Conservation District. Now, Soil and Water Conservation District has insufficient staff to do that on a countywide basis. If we were to change that, and we assign that responsibility, for example, to the building department, and assign that, and reduce the number of acres that were required down to virtually empty property, then we would create a problem with respect to enforcing, because the building department does not have the staff in order to do that. So, even though we can change the ordinance, we also have to be aware of the impact that's going to have on our ability to enforce it. It's not that we're going to ignore the problem, but it's something that's going to have to be taken care of on a longer term basis, rather than simply immediate amendment of the ordinance.
Thanks for your answer. My second question was having to do with the dim center, wondering if it's become a self-sustaining venue? Does the incoming rental cover the monthly operational funds and personnel, or are we running a monthly deficit? So, what's the average deficit, and is there a plan to do something about it if there is a deficit? I checked other nearby venues, and they charge more per rental for three hours, or four hours, or per day, and also have extra charges for setup, tear down, for if alcohol is brought in, there's a fee for that. My daughter works at a similar facility, and their rates are double or higher of what's being charged here.
There is a plan that's being currently in the, staff is working on reviewing the prices for that, and we recognize that that's very low for this area. As far as the staffing, the rest of park correction is already over there, so those staff salaries are already included in the budget. The rest of it, you know, we'll just take it as we come, until we can come to a plan to do that. The facility just opened, it's not going to be here, so we're working on trying to get those things resolved.
Does anybody know if the talking ahead with the monthly deficit is running? And who is, is the county paying for it?
Yeah, county's paying for it, it's a county bill.
Was there plans before it got built, or how to cover the operation or grants, or anything like that?
There were some plans in place for that, when Columbus was here, but as he's gone, we're now having to revamp what we were doing previously.
And who was Columbus?
He was county administrator.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a brief comment now, you mentioned the drainage, I'd like to comment on it, are you headed to your seat. Meeting post, I don't know, but Mr. Kurt Smith, Mr. Cook, myself, and Mr. Moore, we are meeting almost monthly to discuss those issues with, with council, to representatives of council, and we are well aware of the problem the drainage issue created amongst the homeowners. And so, it is high on our heart, it is, as you heard, Mr. Cook, the solution is not simple, but we are discussing it, we're waiting on this study, hopefully it's going to help us some. Like I said, we've got our new administrator, we're going to task him on trying to resolve some of the issues, like I say, there's a lot, lot sold, that, you know, it's going to be a problem in the future, and we don't have those answers yet, and I want to assure y'all that we are aware of it, we are discussing it frequently, and actually going to probably, I know Mr. Smith, we, last time we met, we discussed a meeting with our building department and all people, and being impacted, calling an official meeting, just to start brainstorming some solutions for that problem. So, no, it's not that I should want to hear, but we are aware of it, we want to fix it anyway, cause for, make it less impact on the people it's involved with. Mr. Moore.
Mark, before you make your comment, I just want to say that one of the things this council is trying to do is to change openness and transparency, to make things more evident, and to involve our stakeholders. One of the problems that we had with the drainage study, that was a grant request that we made to the Rural Infrastructure Authority, they provided us funds to do that study, there were strong recommendations at that time to the county administrator, to open that process up, so that stakeholders could make substantial input into that process, to identify the specific problems that arose. One of the reasons that we did that grant was because we knew we had significant drainage problems in the village, and we wanted to have the opportunity to make input to that study. Unfortunately, the decision was made to award that study to our contract engineers, there was no input by stakeholders, and as a result, we have, we have not seen the final product, although I understand that it's going to be discussed at the next council meeting, and I'm looking forward to doing that. But what we're trying to do is to change all of the processes that are involved, so that we make sure when we have the opportunity to do something, that we get full input from our stakeholders, so the problems can be identified, as well as potential solutions. That's it.
Hey, Mark, I know, changed gears on me a little bit, we went through reassessment, what I would say is probably the highest point, really, but you kept closing.
Can you take a closer look?
Sorry.
Is that right?
Yeah, sorry. So we, we just went through reassessment. And I understand this probably isn't some council can directly, um, help us with it, but maybe so. Um, I, I contend that we went through reassessment at a point in time in this that was highest. And it's already come down, so it's not out of measure. The, even in village construction, so it's down. Um, our, our neighbor just sold, but considerably less than what the house was, was worth. Um, so I, I, I can feel that, that our assessments, really hard, and that should be, that our, our companies that are in the, uh, uh, so, I don't know what the plan should be, but, but I think it's a lot coming in this time, that, uh, it's, uh...
Well...
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
One of the things about reassessments, determined by state, the county has no control over when that happens. And every resident has the right to go to the assessor and make their case for why they believe that whatever their assessment is, is not correct. And there is a board that needs, uh, to review those things. So don't say that there's not, you don't have any hope of it not happening, it could happen. But you have to go through the process to do that.
And I would comment too, one thing that most, if, if you live in a corner county, and you're resident in S L B, and this is your primary residence, your assessment cannot increase over fifteen percent over a five-year period. It goes up about three years, so the three eighty eight protects us. So the person buying the new house next to you at the, the higher rates, can, this taxes could possibly be double what Georgia is, because you're locked in whatever you purchase your house on. You know, every five years when we do reassessment, there is that cap that you cannot go over. And if you feel that's, like Mr. Frank said, that's still unfair, it's too high for, when initially, you know, bought your house or whatever, uh, Peter, uh, he's, he works very good, uh, he doesn't like for it to go to the appeals board, he'd rather resolve it amongst the, you know, amongst the residents. He's been working with quite some times, he does a good job. We only have just a very few, not even a handful, that go all the way to the, to the, to the appeals board. So please remember, take that into consideration. Yes, sir.
Let me just, let me just add to that, that although Act three eighty eight, two thousand and six, which mandates the five-year review, it puts a cap on the amount that, uh, a house can be reassessed upwards, fifteen percent, there's no limitation with respect to a change in the assessment of a property at the point of sale. So that when that, that property is, when that property is sold, if it is sold for considerably less than the assessment, that sale price will go into the calculations in determining the next five-year assessment. So as those, if, if the values of those properties drop over that period of time, that'll take, that, that will eventually, not immediately, but eventually, uh, impact the market. The other thing I might add is that with the, with the reassessments being higher, there is a rollback that is involved in that under law, which means that total property tax collections in the county may not increase as a result of the reassessments. So when, when you take that into consideration, that means that for most individual taxpayers who are not impacted by point of sale, their taxes are probably not going to increase substantially if at all. In succeeding years, even though that, those property reassessments are higher, county is limited by Act three eighty eight to the amount of increases in tax levels that it can implement based on increases in the cost of living, uh, the, the C P I, and in the growth in the population. So even though your assessments may be, um, um, inaccurate or high, it's, it's really not going to affect your property taxes anymore.
Next person.
This is Paula. Hi, my name is Paula Goldman, I want to thank you for coming here, I really appreciate you taking your time and up to the business. Um, alright, they, they heard what you said. Um, I, uh, want to know if there's possibility of getting glass recycling? We do such wonderful recycling here in the corner county, but I have to take my glass of Georgia to get recycled. And, um, I would like to see it as glass recycling, thank you.
This is a Tri County and a solid base, so that's a great question for you.
That is a good one.
That's a tough.
Yes, it's tough, because there is no market for recycling. You can't find anyone to be buying it, now it costs a lot.
On the bathroom.
Go ahead.
Maybe it's too close to the other market.
The recycling, it, it tri-county, it's looking at your old estate, trying to find a market to be able to take home recycling. We, we, if it costs, it's tough, it's tough. At one time, it was no problem, we had a child, and trying to protect anything that...
It's a big problem.
But now, trying to not take it, a lot of our recycling. And so that's why I never really could try and find something that would be okay. I say thousands of dollars, uh, having a problem.
Just my comment, certainly on the board, at Tri County, uh, the cost to deal with the glass and nowhere to put it, it presents a major cost to us. I know my environmental friends and many of you are that here, it's still, does it end up, you know, hopefully not in the lake. I'm constantly picking up bubbles along my shoreline, sometimes it really disturbs me what people might be doing with this glass if we don't do something with it. Uh, Mr. James, I can continue to address that issue at our Tri County board meetings.
Trash garbage, it gets more expensive every day. You want to pay more, because at a sale, they're going to be built in a three row. You're talking about twenty eight million dollars, and for nine times. That's why they're not called, built a sale, to bury the garbage, and make sure it don't get out to the ladies, to drink it, to that, take it here all year, that's what made garbage so expensive, of course. You take it to, to the city, then they got to be trampled, or to Johnson's after. From Johnson's after, another quarter mile, then to Johnson's after, that's it, that's it. When we get down there, that's when they have to be putting these sales, they, 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 it's fixed. But they take it here, out here, and it goes costs, that's it, to other costs, the garbage will continue to go up. And then, and then, and then, it's kind of bad. Be there, not the county, be there for sure, and yeah. We don't find a good guidelines, they're going to find it, then it's going to cost you to take it there more. So we want to do work that I'm saying, making it safe that you can make.
Yes, sir. Next person. We see this face, we can't...
World friends.
That's right. Right there, you're right there, so that's fine, thank you.
Hi, my name is Randy Foss. I live at three oh five Greenview Court. Over a year ago, I started attending county council meetings. And since that time, I've met with individual council members, Kurt Smith, C B W, and C W S, to better understand the water quality and pressure issues in S L B. Not to mention the information on the web concerning Calhoun Falls. After gathering information and then submitting a list of questions to C W S, the county council over the last two weeks, they were responding to this form. It has become apparent the infrastructure in S L B has been taken for granted over the years. Council is known of the water pressure problem since the discussion of where a water tower was going to be placed for six years. The recent engineering study by Thomas and Hutton identified approximately twenty million in projects, which include the water tower for S L B and the surrounding area. A resident of S L B did a recent water pressure monitoring study over twenty hours on his property. And showed that the water pressure was in athlete at seven o'clock in the morning, and in another time during the day, I wonder why?
Which section, that he has in?
Magnolia. Right down the road from Chuck, by the way. And what's interesting, I went out yesterday morning, I turned my sprinklers on at seven o'clock, and I live a mile away, my sprinklers wouldn't work either. We got a problem. If we can't water our lawn, there probably isn't enough water at seven o'clock in the morning to put out a fire. Do you think? So are we going to schedule, when we're going to have fires? Can't do that. I won't spend time going through all the responses to the questions asked except one, which was, it's too soon to put together a plan. It's been six years. Council's at six years, and a plan begins when a goal is identified and is a living document. Right? We have a goal. Clean water and water pressure. There should be a plan with milestones, assigned tasks to individuals, including completion dates, which all residents of the COVID county can see, so we can monitor the progress. And I think that's where our new administrator comes in. Some tasks may include residents of S L B. If we've got to go lobby the federal government, the state government, and go raise hell, we've got lots of people with a lot of experience. And I'm a good sales guy, I love talking. The council needs to become transparent and over-communicate. There's that transparency word, Chuck? Transparent. To the residents of S L B, there have been six hundred homes added to the water system since the discussions on the water tower began, and we can't wait another six years. So what's the plan? Which is what I asked you guys about a year ago at presentation, five times.
Thank you, uh, you waiting on the answer?
Yep.
That is, that is the question I've been expecting basically all night, and particularly with the situation that we have in Calhoun Falls. And I know, and I've been talking with our new administrator and with our, my colleagues, uh, you mentioned plan, to me, my number one concern, or our number one concern, is a contingency plan on what happens if we have immediate failure of Calhoun Falls water supply. That's critical. I know the pressures, all this stuff, a part of that study that's been doing, I know one of those Thomas and Hutton studies that we're paying for, that I'm anxiously waiting on the results. Uh, but I feel like we need to call an immediate, a board meeting, uh, with C P W, to find out exactly what they can and can't do to support us in the future. Clearwater, some of their representatives here, they'll be involved, council will be involved. Uh, we need to get in a room and come up with that plan if, if things really go a lot worse in Calhoun Falls, and they could well, you know, what they, I update I get is on YouTube or T V, and it sounds like most everyone's quit up there. And so I think, I'm going to ask Mr. Upchirp, I haven't asked him yet, but, uh, we need, also they could have it here, because we have signed, y'all know, we started making our almost forty thousand dollars a month payments directly to them, because the money was disappearing in Calhoun Falls. So they, they are our key player, uh, we need a plan for them, what they plan to do, we put out our legislators, we're meeting with them real soon, uh, we continue to ask them what's going to, everyone's just kind of running around in circles, and we're not coming up with that plan. And I think that, to me, right now, is the most critical thing that we need to get together, is what happens uh, if for some reason, everyone walks off the job, and the line blows out, and we have no water coming, you know, front everybody. Because the way we're set now, we depend on both C P W and Calhoun Falls, or Abbeville, which really distributes to Calhoun Falls. And a lot of folks don't know, but we do have, um, we do buy some water from Columbia County on the south end of Fisher Plantations, and, you know, it's out of options to get water. We, we need looking options, finding emergency water supplies from other places, and not depend on, uh, Calhoun Falls between those and Toby's or anything. So that's kind of my answer, it's not a very good answer, but we're going to work. Uh, Mr. James, you want to comment on that?
I think since I've been here, the biggest thing that we need is a plan, not just for water, but for many other services that we provide. And so we're going to get together with those who provide us water, and also those who may also give, provide us water that aren't currently. Um, then we also need to plan how we're going to pay for it. It's great if we have a twenty million dollar plan for water, but we have to all get together and, and find the funding. And so my commitment is, we're going to put together a plan. I feel like every day I have a council member walk in my office and talk about what we're going to do with water. Some of the water issues right now are out of our control, and so we need to take control of our situation to figure out how to do it, and that's my commitment to everyone in this room.
Thank you. Very good, yes, sir.
The issue, this is, uh, this is a very complex issue, and I'm not going to try to simplify it. Obviously, this is one of the most serious problems that we have in the county, and particularly in S L B. If we're going to continue to be able to market properties here effectively, we need to have good quality water, and we need to have adequate pressure in order to use that water for the purposes for which it's intended. We know, based on anecdotal evidence, people bringing their, their water filters to county council, that we have water quality issues, particularly certain. But it's not that we're not doing anything, it's not that we're not talking to anybody, we are. Uh, we're talking to a lot of people. There, there's, there are governments, if you haven't seen them. Um, but there are, there are legal issues that are, when we asked the question, with respect to some of the legal issues, um, as to whether or not we can cancel our contract with Abbeville and Calhoun Falls. Um, we probably can, based on the, the, the clauses that are in the current contract, based solely on water quality. But there are other legal issues that are involved. Uh, if you didn't know, we have money in the bank that we have to, uh, we have to maintain in order to, to assure the loans that were taken out by Calhoun Falls to build a water treatment plant. And we are the insurer for those loans. So if we cancel our contract with Calhoun Falls, and they are unable to make their loan payments to U S B A for that, how, how, how is that going to impact us from a financial standpoint? Are we going to have to make an outlet, do we have to buy our way out of that contract, uh, in terms of sharing? There are technical issues, serious technical issues that are involved in terms of finding an alternate source for the water. Um, capacity, water pressure, uh, we talked about an S L B water... We talked about an SLB water tower and where it's gonna be located. If we do all of the things that are required, and I've made conversations with Cheryl Daniels and other staff at CPW, they are perfectly capable of supplying water to the entire county. Now, to do that, they have to put on an additional, they have to put on an additional shift, which means they're gonna go out and recruit some very scarce technicians, which would create a problem. They would, they, they, their information is we would have to build a one million gallon capacity water tower at a place in the village that would be able to supply water pressure to the entire northwest quadrant of the county. It's not just SLB. You've got, you've got to supply all the way to Mount Carmel and Abingdon County line. That's gonna take a lot of pressure, not just for SLB, but for, for everybody else. We need to have engineering studies done with respect to the size and location of water owners. CPW is gonna supply that water and fill that water tower? Are those mains sufficient in order for them to do that? And we need an engineering study. We don't know. And we don't know the cost that we have to make infrastructure improvements to do that. There are obvious financial issues. I've had discussions with a number of people. Our legislative delegation and Billy Garrett, who's been very instrumental in getting, even though he's no longer on the legislative delegation, he's been very instrumental in getting money for us through the legislature. Billy's recommendation, in terms of funding, is that we do a special tax district. Now, my response to Billy was, well, I can do a special tax district. That's probably gonna require a referendum. What do you think the chances are that SLB is gonna pass another special tax district to be taxed for that? And even if they do, there's no guarantee that we can get this for within the eight percent constitutional limit. So we might have to do another referendum in order to get the money to a special tax district. So we're looking at a variety of sources. For example, RIA, we could get a one point time to the dollar grant, which would probably fund about twenty percent or less of what we need for that project. We could get a loan to USDA, but right now the rural development loan program with USDA is in the process of being zeroed out. So we don't know whether those funds are gonna do that. We could go to the legislature and try to get money through the proviso. But during the last budget cycle, the legislature zeroed out essentially all the proviso money. So when we look at financing to do an alternate plan, we're not sure how, how that's, how that's going to happen. There are organizational issues. If we ban with CPW in order to provide water for the entire county, that would mean that the vast majority of their customers are not going to have representation on the CPW board of directors. Now, there have been bills introduced in the legislature in the past that would enable municipal CPWs to have representation from all of their customers, including customers who are not within the municipality. I have asked the legislative delegation to look into that and to make some progress in terms of getting a bill we introduced that would provide some representation to the county. And that's easy to set to done, even if we provide the opportunity to do that, we'd still need approval from the town of Corwin in order to expand that, that representation. So we've got organizational issues. We've also got project planning and management issues. If we're gonna go into partnership with CPW and the town of Corwin, then we need to work out a public call with respect to who's gonna do what and when. So there are a number of issues, and we have raised these questions, and we are working on trying to get answers to them. But before we can develop a firm plan in terms of alternative sources of water, what we need to do, how we need to reorganize, how we need to repay the funding, how we need to repay the engineering expertise that is required to do all of that, it's gonna take a little bit of time.
Thank you, Mr. And just as a comment, he keeps mentioning CPW, and he's been the one made of the CPW, if you heard me mention earlier. We have all got to get in a room together to hear from them, what they can or can't do. And putting all our eggs in one basket could also create a problem for the future as far as the water supplies. So I'm gonna lean more toward alternate supplies. It's been brought to, one person is very familiar with our water system, he mentioned Greenwood. Would be glad to serve us. If it's all downhill, the pressures would be great. So those type of things, it's what we have got to come together as a group and come up with a plan. Individually, we can't answer all these questions. And I, this is not a place to even try them again. But that's why I think it's so important as a leadership candidate, we come together with these groups, Abingdon included. We probably won't get anyone from Calhoun Falls, and that's fine, we met with them before and perhaps basically not anything. So those are our suppliers. The option is probably leaking Columbia County. Would be quicker, cheaper, as far as doing, you know, depending solely on CPW. That's just my comment. We're not gonna get into that especially tonight. But we are definitely seriously gonna address it shortly, as we talk. Mr. Upchurch knows, and that's probably his largest salary starting out the shoot, and we're excited about what he's gonna bring, and we're gonna get you some, a lot of their answers. So if you can bring us a clean filter every month, first of all.
I'd love to, I'd love to.
Yes, sir.
How much, how much was this? That's a Thomas and Hutton study. How much do we pay for it?
Is that, which study is it? They've got several for it.
That's the one that, the Department of County Water Capacity Update, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. How much do we pay for this?
We can get the amount that I can recall, but I know, I know our water directors here. Can you answer that question right off the bat without? Right, you get that presentation? And he's asking, do we know the amount that we could? I asked, I asked Mr. Upchurch just yesterday that I wanted some numbers on how much money we paid these folks for these studies.
Yeah.
So we're gonna get you some answers because I think it's very important, accountability and transparency that we haven't been receiving.
Right.
We're on the right track, this continued, trust. I don't like being politicians, saying trust me, that's not good. But.
That's what people in Washington.
I know, say it all the time, so that's why I hesitated. But we want to resolve this. We want you folks to know what's going, as much as we want to know what's going. Because we, y'all hold us accountable, so that's why we're here today. We're gonna continue to do this, but please, continue to come before council. If you wanna come every month and sign up, please do, because squeaky wheel gets the praise.
Pretty much.
And we, and you're making, you're getting attention, and we're here recording, and we're gonna, we're gonna work through this.
Yeah, because it'd be frustration that we're all having this.
I understand, but it could be a lot worse, and that's what we.
It's gonna get worse. We have people in Colorado that live in SLB and said, this is how it started in Colorado.
I understand, but my concern is that we do have pretty good water. It's, it's highs on the list to work out this issue if we have a failure of the Calhoun Falls water system. And so that's.
The goal has been a problem for over six years.
I understand.
And maybe we should stop building new homes.
We don't wanna do that, but. All right, thank you. Hold one second.
Just one thing, I'm talking about water pressure, of course, some of that is predicated too on how much is used. How many homes are on the same, what's on the code sack? All of those things contribute to low water pressure as well. So council is well aware of that, as Mr. Hamby stated, we are looking at how we can resolve those issues. As far as the studies for Thomas and Hutton, part of those studies were paid for with a grant. I know they did come out of extra county money, but I will get the information for you and get a post suit.
Yes, sir.
We're good to go. All right, my name's, my name's Wes Newman, I'm in Shenandoah. So you know I got the water issues every day as well. At the last county council meeting, it was mentioned that there might be restrictors put in our water lines. Has that been investigated? And? Survey says?
Yes, so we're going to get Rico to answer that. The question, the answer is, we have investigated that three of those, I believe, have been removed at this point. I believe there's possibly one left, but it's not in the area in which there's low water pressure. But Rico, can you confirm or deny what I was saying?
Please speak up, Rico. This is Clearwater, our Clearwater water director.
Hey there, I'm Drew Langston, I represent Rico. So we did some field investigation on those four pressure reducing valves. And just for everyone's information, pressure reducing, pressure reducing valves are put in lines to protect against excessive pressure that may cause blowouts in the distribution system. So at one point, engineer designed the system and said, hey, it needs to be pressure reducing valves here. We went and looked back at some of the maps that the county maintains, and three of those four have been removed. There is one still in service, and it is in the Martin Drive area. So if we can, if someone is experiencing low pressure on Martin Drive, we're happy to continue to investigate that, but we, we did improve on the maps as well as we did some field investigation back after those pressure reducing valves were no longer in the system.
Thank you. Great. All right, so I've got a question for Jackie. At the first town hall meeting we had.
Yeah, I talked about you. You know you have to go in for it.
There's a lot of people talking about me. But you spearheaded, put together a correspondence.
I spearheaded, put together addresses and information, not a letter. I did not say we could do a letter. We said, you guys write out what your issues were to those guys.
Interesting, but that's not what we.
That's not what you understood.
Well, not what the two other people involved in the conversation heard. So what can we get done? Here's the deal. We're trying to get together some type of a letter to send to our state officials, governors, state reps, whatever. Tell them what's going on down there, with the infrastructure issues. And invite them to come down here and look at it. Because I spent ten minutes on the web looking at grants. There is insane amount of money still out there, billions of dollars available. The streets, roads, water, infrastructure, cell phones, schools, fire departments, EMS, plus a ton more. When I asked at one of the county council meetings if anyone was actively researching this, I was told no. So one of the deals here is, maybe we can get somebody to help us write a letter, and then, talking to Kirk, it's gonna go out on a link, and we're just gonna start a campaign and emailing all of our elected officials and telling them, here's what's going on. Come down here for yourselves. We got midterm elections coming up in about fifteen months. You know, and it's like, hey, take care of us, help us out, at least give us some ideas, do something for us. So we need someone to write that letter. I can't do it. But maybe somebody out here has a background in writing something like that to a politician or a group of politicians and ask them, hey, here's what's going on, and what can you do for us? All right, so Jackie, that explains why you've never replied to much of emails. All right, Bernie, your turn.
I did wanna add to that comment that Mr. Hamby submitted. Daniels, Daniels Gibson is our house rep, not far down the road toward Greenwood, has done an excellent, excellent job being our voice for this little county in which he represents. He's brought, what, three, four years ago, Sheriff, I noticed our sheriff showed up. Appreciate you coming tonight. He brought us about five hundred thousand dollars for new vehicles, so. Great guy. Give him a call. He can have that letter. It works, you blow his phone up. That's, and then our other representative that's highly senior is Senator Madison in Edgeville, called it. When they're out of session, blow their phones up. You know, that's what we do. Every time we see them, we hit them up. But if it's just us, you know, we just kind of like a little squeaky wheel, but we need some loud squeaks. So I just recommend each and every person, not only do the letter, that's a great idea, but a personal call goes a long way with someone particular that might be coming up for a reelection. He's very sincere, he's not your typical everyday politician.
Okay, that's great. But I still think, no, I still think we need to get as many people involved as we can.
And the letter, the letter thing we did.
Email, email, call, call, call. Okay, we've got a lot of people living here. And if we able to get a third of the folks at the village to contact them once, I think they will take notice.
Yes, sir. That's how it works.
So can we work with you guys and maybe a couple folks here at SLB to put this thing together?
Yes, sir.
Is that possible?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Maybe one of your representatives, it seems to be, and he needs some assistance.
Oh, there's one.
I'm getting on, I'm getting on, I want a new guy, another new guy. We have new guys down on this thing, so, yeah.
Okay, so kind of along the same lines, you and I have had a discussion or two about focus groups.
Yes, sir.
We've got a wealth of information that people have gathered here. Fantastic backgrounds, infrastructure, grants, road repair, small business development, tourism. We've got one of the best areas to bring people in as tourists to spend their money here. Fishing, hunting, whatever. We've got a Dorn fishing complex sitting there empty most of the time. We should be beating that thing up with competitions all the time.
Amen.
When the airport gets filled, you know, fly and fish. It may not take off for a year or two, but the winner is gonna get out. Okay? So we need to get these focus groups going. So I've asked you, I've sent you an email, I've never heard back. Have you done anything along these lines to get this going?
Mr. Upchurch, could you take up for me, please? I was under discussion yesterday.
Why does the new guy get everything?
Because I've been waiting on him because I couldn't live without a former governor until I had a good administrator, and that's why we're here.
So you and I are gonna be friends. And we've talked about this several times since I've got here. There are some committees that were talking about creating some formal, some informal. My, before I came here, I worked some in tourism. My background is in economic development, and so some of those things that you've mentioned are items that I already have on my list. I'll work with Mr. Hamby and the rest of the council to put those groups together. You all have lived here and been involved longer than I have, and some are going to rely on you and the information you provide. I've already been told that you all have a wealth of knowledge, and we want to make sure we put all of you together in one room and figure out a way forward. So Mr. Hamby has been talking about that extensively. We're gonna figure out exactly what that role would be, who those people are going to be, and then how to assign them. So that, Mr. Hamby has been talking about that, and we will get together.
Do you have a timeframe?
I don't wanna give you a timeframe because.
He tells us ten years, ten weeks.
So one of the things that I have, I won't go into too much detail on it tonight, but there will be a tourism committee that will be put together. We have some funds that have been coming in to create a tourism committee, and money that can be spent, that has to be spent for advertising, marketing, other things. So your representatives will be appointing someone to serve on that committee, and we can expand that. I'm gonna inform them that.
I don't know jack about it, but if you need another pair of hands on the, okay, alright. So finally, everybody that's here, this was an A-OK turnout, I was expecting a lot more. A lot more, but you know we have a county council meeting the third Tuesday of every month. You need to come to this, because this is where these guys here come to, it's a different format completely, um, but it's nice to stand up and heard. I mean, we are elected paid officials sitting here and bring stuff to their attention. Let them know what the heck is going on, because I tell you, grip into your neighbor ain't gonna get it, okay? And man, people know I'm on one of the committees here, they stop me on the street when I'm walking my dogs and start bending my ear. Great, go to the council meeting, bend their ears, okay? Alrighty, so again, I invite you all to go there. So really, I mean, the goal, my goal, and I'm sure all of your goal, makes this a much, I mean, it's a great place to live now. We can make it even better. And maybe if we can bring in a little more business to downtown Orkman, pull Orkman out of that where they are basically listed as being depressed. You know there's a twenty-five percent poverty rate right there on the street, giving us money? It would just really be nice to pull that out in advance. So anything you can do to help, get involved, that's all I can say is, get involved. Thank you so much.
Now, I do have a comment for you also about the talent that's performing high, particularly in this community. Uh, it's just no words, subscribe what is available. People, I get calls all the time, I'm sure my colleagues do, you folks wanted to get involved, wanted to leave the county county, of that place in which they live, and so that's why we are gonna focus, uh, on these groups, uh, we haven't decided. I really personally don't wanna set a, nominate a bunch of boards where we have to vote and do that, but just advisory kind of thing where you, a group of people that are chosen would be, with whoever the different groups that we put together, uh, that get very excited about using the potential that exists here. And I wanna go further, uh, step further and mention, it's not only S L B. Uh, Modoc Shores where I live, you never hear me mention it, but there is some brilliant, brilliant, uh, business folks down there. If you've never been to our little, little community, you'll be amazed, and Chris Plantation, and other, other plants with A B. There's a lot of, lot of talent, even from the county county, there's a lot of experience, uh, particularly in the rural suburb. I, there's some people that know, uh, have had a lot of experience with it, and so those are the people we've got to reach out to, get involved. Uh, the coming few minutes of that coming to our meeting is very important, I can emphasize that enough, enough. We wanna hear from y'all, we wanna work together, because I totally agree, I dropped in around the village a couple, you know, a couple days ago. We were talking about the priority to be of the village, and I agree, I said, this is, you know, this is economic, one of our most reported economic divisions. The priority is here, but I said, this is not S L B, you're the county county. Everywhere I go, someone asks where you're from, I'm gonna say, I'm from Modoc Shores, I say, I'm from the county county. And y'all are from the county county, uh, we, we proud to have the village folks here, of what y'all brought in there. The volunteer, that's what I wanna mention, you mentioned the Dorn voting facility. The most impressive thing that I witnessed this summer, I've got the flyer here, it's two volunteers, I wanna recognize them tonight. It's, uh, Karen Love and Dan Hill, put together on their own, the cast for kids. And I showed up just by accident to that fishing event, and I still calls every time I mention what I saw. Those people, those little kids, handicapped kids, some of them severely handicapped, getting so excited about getting a little fishing rod and tackle box and going fishing. And then, I know, I think the power squadron, I don't even know who all the thing, there's a ton of volunteers, we had about twenty kids. But I wanna have forty or fifty kids like that fishing next year, like that event. Uh, you mentioned the Dorn voting facility, we just requested, uh, uh, blue lighting, uh, LED lighting. Uh, we do, we got a lot of plans to improve that place, it's been a bit for quite some time, that isn't old enough. And the potential is there, there's where just us as a decision making group, we can't do all of this. We've got to have you folks, and I'm pleading with you, uh, George is sitting there, he's put together, uh, he wants to be on our, uh, particularly tourism, you know, he's one of the biggest, uh, well, it's the largest probably, Berlin on the lake, and he's very proud. Uh, for those that attended the patriotic celebration, we just an awesome, awesome crowd there, five or six hundred people by land. Probably several hundred votes showed up, and all thirty minute fireworks showed, uh, so he has vision. We need you folks with a vision to partner with us and help us to make a place that we know can be. I love it here, I mean, I, I've already, I know this is going a bit too far, but I've already made my will out. I'm gonna be cremated, I have a beach on my property, but be there, I'm not really... Anyway, thank you, yes, sir. Oh, one second.
Before we go on, I just wanted to make one, uh, comment about the, the talent that we have in the county in particular, S L V. When we were interviewing candidates for the new, uh, county administrative position, uh, one of the questions that I asked Mr. Upchurch and a number of the other candidates was, under the circumstances where you have far more things to do than you have staff, what experience have you had with respect to the use of volunteers and unpaid experts with respect to, uh, doing the staff work that is required, of which we cannot get done with our existing staff? And, one of the things that, uh, that I admired about Mr. Upchurch was the experience that he has in doing so. Um, I know that Mr. Hamby met with, uh, with Mr. Upchurch for his one-on-one at, what, early, three o'clock in the afternoon? Um, I met with him at, um, ten eleven, and one of the things that I presented to him was a proposal that I had put together last March, um, while we were still in the, the interview processes, that laid out a plan as to how we can identify that professional talent, how we can quantify the abilities that we have, and how we can put all of that together to use it to the best advantage, to do that staff work, uh, for which the county does not have in our staff. So, I think we've made some progress on that, I think it's something that we absolutely need to do. We're gonna get, uh, make some progress, and I think there's a way to do it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Kathy Boss again, um, after hearing some of the discussion, I just have a few more questions, comments. First to Mr. Upchurch and to the county lawyer, whoever it is. I highly encourage you to try to break that county powers contract so we're not under the problems. Um, second, I hope everybody here knows the water issues besides their own problem with, you know, poor quality or poor pressure. You might take a moment, um, after I give you my third question, uh, defining the difference between clear water or the, the city system and what's going on with County Falls. Everybody might not know, um, so just like a brief overview of the issues. Um, and last is, my antennas went up when it was mentioned to give us a second special tax district. A couple moments after saying that this was not just an S L B issue, it's a county issue for like the whole upper part. This shouldn't be a special tax just for S L B, this is a county issue.
No, it'd be county law. We just had S L B tonight, but we represent the entire county.
Mr. Kirk mentioned the special tax for S L B, and I don't think, in my opinion, it should be county law.
It can.
Thank you.
Before we do anything, we got to do an initial, initial, uh...
Understood.
We have to look, see what it best, for the alternative we have, because we don't know what they would say, CPW can do with y'all. Because we, we have to provide water for the entire county, not just one area. And so, we, to be able to, you have to provide water, yeah, S L B and, uh, Mount Carmel, work to, to surround it. We need, we have to sign a contract. And we, we, we have to borrow money to do that, to let people have to be paid. If we make that, if we make a, find a way to get out, we may still have to pay, pay that, pay that D R O, as well, pay the cousin.
I think, I think we're...
We're talking about a lot of costs, but that would establish with that street. We can't make no decision, let down, it's up to you. We'll be talking to people at the county department, we'll be talking to people in the area, at the same time, in the future. We're looking at what's in Greenwood, or Columbia County, that George, what can they do? And I said, this, oh, we like to have everyone getting involved, but the county government, they're not like running the business. And I worked in the, the business, government is totally different. So, we still have to follow the rules. You just can't come in and run damn that big when you're on the private jobs, it's just a water problem. But we still need all everyone expertise throughout this country. And we, we here in a great time, and continue to provide that, you guys have a water problem? But we, the county is working on the problem, and we will get there. We're not here to scare nobody tonight, so I hope nobody will get upset, but then we have to be careful, when we use the water. When we building up our, our pool, taking, keeping that, that time of year, we're sowing, squashing, our grass, and we still want to keep the green, so we use it as, as a water. And that's why we're gonna be using fresh water, by doing that.
Thank you. The attorney and I are looking into the contract and what can be done to possibly get out of it. I know that there is, the contract is, uh, very long and lengthy, you know, I know we still have quite some years left on that contract. It's obvious that County Falls is having some issues, and so we're investigating and seeing if there's a way out. Uh, at this time, it's in my twelfth day, I'm still, I'm still learning, but, um, I'm working with the attorney on that, and that is being investigated. And we're bringing in other partners to make sure that that's being prepared. Um, on the other side, you talked about communication, that's one, another thing, as I'm learning, the difference between all the different water systems, and who provides what service in the contract means to those. Um, I'm working on putting together my own notes, and once I get a firm understanding of the, the current situation, I'll make sure to share that information, whether it's on Facebook, on YouTube, Instagram, um, whether that's with the newspaper, I know the newspaper's here today, um, to make sure that we're being more transparent. But I encourage you all to come to the council meetings, to share your, um, share your input, bring your questions. It was very informative in the first meeting I went to, when people brought forward questions, and I went straight to the water department to investigate. So, I don't hear your questions sometimes, and it may be difficult for me to know what the issues are in the community, so I appreciate your question. And we'll be more of a transparent investigator than I would.
And I'll turn it back to my husband.
Let me, let me help you out, let me help you out. CPW goes six hundred thousand gallons a day. When they turn the valve on the S L B, it's one point two million. Their capacity is two point five million a day. And yes, they have to have...
Three, three point five if they put on an initial shift.
That's not what he told me, he said two point five.
True.
They have enough capacity.
Okay, let me, um, let me make one thing, uh, very clear. When I, when I mentioned a special tax district for S L B, um, that was a recommendation made by Governor Garrett, not me. And I told Governor that, uh, the chance of passing another special tax district in the village, um, would have about as much chance as in high several now.
Yes, sir.
So I have a question and would ask a whole, anybody that's here, to have the county council have a meeting here at town hall every third month, so that we know and we see the results of what we're looking to have done and what we would like to see done. So I would like to find out, in the audience, every third month, that they were here and reporting back to us about the water and the pressure and all that.
We will report that, I'm not sure, we've got the decision that we'll have to make if we wanna do something that quarterly. As I mentioned, we do meet with Kirk, uh, almost monthly, particularly with the issues going on, we need to meet monthly. Uh, we give him updates, he documents, and I don't know how he, some of that's that information, but that's a, uh, a good way to get it on y'all's labor league. Uh, but yeah, more public, uh, public meetings, but I don't see it having to be full council, maybe your representatives, which is three of us.
Just a suggestion, so we can see the progress.
I think it's a great idea, but I don't wanna, this is a question, and, you know, I don't wanna answer that question for us tonight. That's not, we need to discuss how we wanna, you know, make, be more transparent, because you, I hope y'all here tonight, that we are serious about getting more involved, being, staying, uh, our, our new administrator, keep mentioning him. He'll tell you right quick, his door is open, his phone line, I've had a couple people, I said, go ahead and call and set up an appointment. He's ready to meet y'all and listen to y'all, that's, we pay him the big bills.
And I'll say, I'll add to that, I pretty much have a lunch or a dinner meeting scheduled with the residents almost every day for the next three weeks. And so if you have questions or you wanna be with me, my door's open, I'll have lunch with you, you can come to my office, we go to dinner, whatever you need, and so we can address your concerns, I'm willing to do it, so weekdays, weekends, uh, I'm here to help you out.
Right, it was just a suggestion so that we as a village see the progress that's being made. There's a lot of people here versus a few going to the county council meetings, and then, as long as that information is brought back to the residents. But I think that that would be just something, so that we see the progress being made.
Is Mr. Smith here tonight, currently, he's, he's hiding on the back row, we're, we're not gonna let you get by there. But you hear that, you know, we discuss it quite frequently, uh, in our meetings, let's address that, and come up with a, a very good, something that, uh, will help inform, particularly with the water, we all know the water. And you keep mentioning the village, but the issue, if the water fails here, it's water. It's gonna fail the rest of the county too, so this is not an isolated situation that the county finds itself in. So that's, I was sleep over that, because the lady mentioned, and I'm not, because only if my information comes off YouTube, and we know how YouTube is. But we sent them almost, what, four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars of our money to pay for our water, and they have no clue where the money went, they haven't done an audit in three years, uh, why some people up there are not even charged for it? Yeah, I don't know, but again, I'm, I'm not a speaker, because I don't have facts, but that's, the old YouTube, I know Greenwood, in its journal, has carried some good articles about the situation, political situation up there, researching, because it, it's not pretty, it's scary. And that's why I mentioned, y'all don't hear a lot of things I'm trying to say, but we have got, at Everville, we don't have a contract with Everville. We did a little ordinance to pay our payments directly to them, so the money would continue to disappear, because basically, what, uh, two months ago on Friday, they were gonna turn our water off. Uh, that, that's scary, and so we are paying our money straight to them, but we need to get involved with them on this contingency thing. On what happens if they, the whole little town, child, child... Uh, that, that's scary, and so we are paying our money straight to them, but we need to get involved with them on this contingency plan, on what happens if they, the whole little town, or town, collapses, so that's kind of where we are. Uh, mentioning water and sewer, and, uh, particularly, I know Rico and Miss Space is gonna get upset with me, but I do it at all, I probably, he knows what I'm fixing to do. I'm fixing to say, please, call in all your issues with your water, because he, I went and asked him one time about the issues, and it was just a very few, and they called, they document every complaint. And that's how they get, they can pull trends and see areas that maybe are being overlooked, that they need to focus more on, so ring their phones, ring theirs for hours. No, that's not just being a little facetious there, but, uh, it's very important, they document where these locations are. So if there is something that water department can do, and they're in on, uh, they got, they know where to go. It's not asking much, just call that number, they'll take your information.
For those of you who, um, are not familiar, or don't attend the public affairs committee meetings. Uh, I would highly recommend that, uh, you go on the SLV website, for those SLV citizens and residents. Scott Warham, who's the new chair of the, uh, public affairs committee, has brought up a website. In which the information from various public meetings, including the council meeting, and those discussions and decisions, are, are timely posted on that website. So if you're looking for immediate feedback, uh, on a lot of things that are happening in the county, maybe you don't find them on the county's website. Uh, Scott and the, the members of the public affairs committee, uh, including Wes, Wes Newman and others, uh, are going to these meetings, they're collecting that information, they're coming back, and it's going on to the public affairs website. So if you're looking for some timely information, check that website out. Yes, sir.
About some of the leaders, I saw you just found two of each other. Um, just for show of hand, before this meeting tonight, how many, any idea of the water issue? Maybe half? I'm the person from Colorado who's been through this before. I'm the guy from Colorado who's been through this once before, so I can't stress enough to all of you, especially you two. Communication is huge here. Chuck, thank you for all the responses to the questions that you sent to me. It just emphasizes more than any, there is a, 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 a serious problem that's coming. It's not here right now, it's just, I see it, I've been through this before, and all I can ask and pray that you all do for us here at SLV is communicate. And I think I have some great ideas, uh, how to do that, so that these folks can stay more informed and understanding, because we are here to do just this one adventure. You need us to talk to federal, state regulators, or governors, or they matter, we'll do it, and we'll do it as fast as we can. Speaking of, it's, we find, you tell us what you need, we'll do it for you, we're really glad, but please, that whole line of communication, that transparency, these folks need that, so they can, they can help, because we can't help that community because of this. But if we don't do anything, I know where this will go, if you think you're having a problem here, probably, just watch what happens, whereas I, I've seen it, and it's not twice that bad. You guys are gonna make some tough decisions, as I say, this is worse, and worse, and worse. And about these folks that have artificial ducts, which, that's probably a solution, but, uh, artificial ducts, of course, yeah, I like those solutions. But those things, I've seen it happen, and I've seen the board go through that process of telling the citizens, hey, we're, we're stuck, we're having a problem. So, thank you for being aware of, for the last six years, there is a potential problem, I think it's back to a point where we would love to come and help you with whomever it is, power, which is you need to do, so that we can get something from it. And Chuck, playing, you know, it's complex, you explain a lot of the different things that have to happen, and he's correct, but again, I've seen this before. But please, keep us in the loop in terms of, you know, we have a plan, you have these items that you have to accomplish. Show us those, let us know how those are going, so if you do need help, maybe we can help you. But please don't sit back and be nothing, that, that spirit is out, and we are these, and we ask that, and it's coming, so, and no, I'm not here to scare people, I'm not, trust me, these guys, they know it too. We've got, those guys know what they're doing, they're telling, it's just, we need to get together and help you too, so that we can, but money, and we know we're gonna get, to come, this is gonna be a burden for a lot, but. Not only is it a lot of money on there, that we can go solicit for the money, but we've got to do something, and do it quickly, and, and whatever issues you can do, keep us in the loop, please, do so.
Thank you very much, good work.
Yes, sir.
Hey, we're on Beach Three O Six, St. Andrews Land, so I'm gonna talk about water, but a whole different aspect. Uh, who is responsible for repairing leaks related to water?
Where's the leak, is it between the?
Well, if it's on the, if it's on the main, you know, if it's out on the road, yeah, I'm saying like on the side of the road.
That's one of those situations, you have to report, because we've got hundreds of miles of lines.
Different question.
Okay.
Question that, who is responsible for repairing holes? What entity within the county government?
If it's in, if it's in the village, it's county roads, then it's gonna be county water, well, any water line is gonna be the county's, yeah.
Okay, alright, so, uh, I gotta tell you about something, and I, and I, I guess, I'm not sure he pays for this, because, uh, River Drive is near my house, in St. Andrews, near St. Andrews Land. And I've watched this twice on that road, where it was like different spots, but, and it was repaired three times. I'm from Ohio, and I don't know, maybe things are different up there, and different situation, but when we repair holes, or repair, repair water, typically, I don't see, if I got there for a few years. Here, you guys, or somebody is repairing it, not repairing it right, then it leaks some more, then it might go on for a couple more weeks, and then someone else comes out and repairs. I've literally seen it on that road three times. And then I'm wondering, like, well, we're losing water, so nobody's in charge of that, two, who's paying for that? Am I, am I, are we paying the whoever, like, is it an employee of the county, for doing that three times, or is it the contractor that does the water system? I don't know.
But basically, when we lose the water, people really get upset about losing water, they think the price.
You guys don't, or somewhere in the.
Well, we do get upset, but what most people don't realize, with these long-term contracts, there's minimums. And we don't get charged extra, we pay a flat rate, uh, for seven billion gallons. And if, if we use it, there's like a gigantic leak, and you run way over me, then that's when it's achieving, the county, the water department gets start, charged in a high fee for lost water. So lost water is a problem, but if it's a small leak, then we're not pumping the meter, but it sounds like to me, we're responding, but we just got a poor line that's breaking.
Yeah, yeah, so this is my real concern, what I saw there on that one street, for example, is that whoever is going out there, it sounds like an county employee, is that?
Yes, that'd be water, they don't want us authorized to.
It's not the contractor, right, it's not that.
Well, we contract our water service.
Well, okay, but as far as repairs go, it's a county employee?
It's, it's the county issue, CSW is managing the water for the county, so they're employee of C W S.
That's what I was trying, that's a very simple answer to what I was trying to get answered, so CSW is doing, okay. So, does CSW charging you three times when they don't repair it right the first time?
It's part of the time.
So, part of the same thing.
Okay.
And part of the issue might be, one of the things that we have not talked about, is how old all of these lines are throughout the county.
Oh, sure, no question.
And sometimes the repair doesn't take, and they have to do something different.
Do we have standards that we?
There are standards and procedures that are set up for how that is supposed to be done.
Is that in writing, that someone could send to me? Cause I'd love to see it, because, uh, because I can tell you that there's something called the NSF.org, that has a six, standard sixty-one, that talks about materials. And the only reason I'm getting into that, is that actually, they, one of those, uh, repairs happened in front of a guy who was a firefighter for four years, and moved down here, and he couldn't be here, and I just flipped off. He actually watched the guy do the work, he said it was like watching a, a child play with a language, so, I mean, they, they obviously did not know what they were doing, they didn't do it right, which is why I had to come back to that, because he didn't, he didn't do it right the first time. So I think there, I, I've got a question of, I'd like to see the standards for doing this, and, and what materials you have to use? What processes they're supposed to follow? Because I don't think they exist, but I could be wrong, I'd like to be, I'd like to be right.
Be wrong, yeah.
So I'd like to see that in writing, and then I'd like to know that there's some confirmation from somebody, CSW or somebody, that they're following the standards that are supposed to be used. Because I have a funny feeling they're not. Uh, and I'm worried about that, only because I'm paying for it, you're paying for it. We're all paying for it, and if it's not done right, then maybe it doesn't happen again for five years, but maybe in ten years, it, it happens again, and maybe if it was done with the right process and standards, it would happen in twenty-five years. But you have a, I realize we got other issues, but I'd really like for someone to somehow provide that to me, and then also, I'd like for someone to provide to me, and I think you guys might get it, as a dashboard from CSW, you have a month. How many times have they had to go back and re-repair something in the last two years? By address? I'd like to get it in the next month or so, I'd like for you guys to get it, and I think they ought to provide it to you every month, as part of the dashboard of what they're doing out there, because they are making, at least, that's any example of it? I have a funny feeling we're all just wasting a lot of time and not doing things right.
And I do know that we do get a monthly report, on, on that report, it says the numbers of repairs, and the number of taps, and different things.
Or not the number of times, it might say twenty-five times.
Yeah, your street, or your, it doesn't say, but we went there three times, it just, just we have told, or monthly told, of the number of repairs that the water department did.
I think.
James is recording, we hear you, I think it's, I worry you while.
I don't know how to get this information from you, but I'd like to see it, so, do I give you my name and number, or what? Cause I, I'm very adamant about this being changed, because I don't think people do the jobs.
Yeah, I think there's many ways you can do this, and give me your information, I can provide it up to you, and I will provide it up to you, I guess at the next council meeting, but also, reach out to the water department, reach out to them, they have all that, we also get one of their representatives to maybe comment on this.
That would be great, but I would love, I think what you guys though, is you need that, so you can say, they're screwing it up, if they are, if they are, but I can just, that's just one street in the county.
Yeah, I'm happy to address that, so, you know, first of all, what we do is dirty work, so.
What?
It's dirty work, so.
Who are you? Who are you?
My name is Drew Leysen, I'm the regional director for C W S, and I, I support this project, I've been in and out of this project for three years, and helping support the distribution system from a technical perspective. So, we do follow NSF sixty-one standards, we have standard operating procedures, the county has maintained for a, a long time to, to fix the leak. Um, and anyone who's ever fixed a water leak knows that it is, is very dirty business, and as, uh, Councilman Warren Brown said, there are old diverting infrastructure in the ground. And so sometimes you get into a situation where you fix a leak, and the, the pipe is deteriorating, you may chase that leak, and it may crop up at the same spot. Um, there are times where you have a hard time getting the water to stop flowing, and you're fixing the leak, because it's hard to isolate that amount of flow, and it, it becomes a very dirty job. And we've had guys fix leaks in very difficult, uh, situations, where it's, when you do this outside, and you gotta keep the water flowing, you have to, you have to fix it, so, you know.
But we saw it twice on the same street, and having three times a month to get fixed, there's something else going on.
Sure.
I have a, a humble opinion, right?
And, and I think you bring up a great opinion, or a great, uh, point there, that it, it's great to know, how many breaks are you having in, in a certain area, and maybe.
Yes, due graphically.
Yes, because then you start to, kind of from a regulatory standpoint, to say, hey, this section of line, maybe it's old, maybe it's thin wall D C, maybe we replace it with, uh, something with, that can hold greater pressure. And, and sometimes the defects in the pipe that just took us around, and it's originally taken in, sometimes it depends on the, um, there's a number of issues, so.
So, is that being recorded somehow, in G I S system or something? Cause that's really the way you would want to do it.
Yeah, great, great question, so, we do maintain a record of every worker, and we go out to fix the leak, when we are responding to a metering, when we have to pull a water plug, sample, pressure component, that is all recorded within the county's database. So, we, we can, not, when you say G I S, there is not a geospatial component of, of those data events, but if you say, okay, there was a, a leak repaired on, you said River.
That's River Drive.
Little River.
Little River Drive, we, we could, we can, uh, query that to see what, uh, work orders were included.
I'd like to see your report for the last two years, that shows how many times, by address, and then if it's multiple times, which is what I'm pointing to, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, we, we, uh, we'll, we'll get into that, and query the database for as much information as you'd like to.
Okay, how do I contact you?
You can call the water consumer department, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Call the county's website, yeah, and you'll, you'll get in touch with our person over there, and they'll get you a sheet.
Okay.
Uh, I, uh, I got one, one I can tell you.
Yeah.
The way you fix leaks in, like, one day they'll come out and fix the leak, and then the next day, or the next time, they'll follow up on, on the county's website. So they're gonna, they're gonna see it twice anyway, one day is to repair the leak, the next time they'll come out and fix the straw, and the rest is.
Oh, no, no.
They don't always do it.
These are the same.
There wasn't the same spot, like.
The leak was the same spot, it had to come back, and then the other one just went on for nine, I think it's like five, nine, ten, or whatever.
Yeah, and, and sadly, that's, that's not on time, um, you know, maybe, it, like, I, I, I helped support another system that, uh, we saw, maybe in a three-month stretch, and, and just say, three or four years period, over twenty weeks. And it, it turned out to, they used a bad batch of D C, and they had to do a, to replace it, so it's, it's not.
It's complex.
It is, it is a complex system issue.
It's a lot, it's a lot more common in the villages than you would think.
I think it is.
Kirk Smith, uh, and I have, have experienced a, a number of these, in which there have been multiple leaks over a very short period of time, essentially for the same pipe and in the same area. One of, one of the problems that we have in the village is that all of our utilities are underground.
That's a good point.
So, so we've got water, sewer, electricity, telecommunications, and when those were initially laid, to be tapped into by new homes coming in. When there is new construction in the village, and you need to tie into, um, whether it's a, a water tap or whatever. A line may have to be run under a roadway. Now, if you look at the, uh, the, the kind of thing that happened on St. Andrews, um, where that was, it had to be repaired multiple times.
Oh, yeah, it was the.
You look, look across the street.
No, there was nothing going on.
There were new, there were, there were, there were new homes built there, I'm just talking, I'm talking about the leak in Little River that had to be.
There was no new homes built in the place we're talking about.
Uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm talking about the leak in Little, uh, that was at St. Andrews, cause it was the same problem.
Oh, you're talking the one out of the main road.
Yeah, it had, it had, it had to be repaired multiple times.
Got, got.
Some, some of the times, when that, when that occurs, you've got equipment going in, and particularly if you have to bring in a, a backhoe, or a, or any piece of equipment, in repairing one leak. The way the backhoe, particularly, if you've got a computer and a pipe, it, it causes a problem elsewhere, and then, and then you have to go back in and fix that, and every time you fix something, you may have to follow it up, because the equipment that you've used is damaging.
Right, I get that.
So, just, just be aware that in the village, we have a problem with multiple lines, um, and sometimes when, uh, the people come in to fix it, no matter how good a job they do, no matter how careful they are, they create multiple problems, so it's not unusual.
Right.
Uh, to have to go back to the same location multiple times. to have to go back to the same location multiple times.
These were just regular houses, they've been there for twenty years, and this, so it wasn't that specific issue. But, uh, I would just like to say that I hope you as a minister, and you guys as a board, will start requesting CSW to give you that, cause I think there is something going on there. I'm not saying like, I'm just saying there's something going on. So I would, I hope that you guys can add that to the database or information, and then I'm gonna go see him, and then I'll, I guess I'll call you.
All right, good, good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much, we got about ten minutes left, and we break meeting. We take another.
My, my, I am not gonna talk about water. I brought this up at the, um, Dale Haugh Town Hall, where we now have our county administrator, Mr. Upchurch at that one time. I live in Monticello, and I have great water pressure, sorry guys, but I do. Uh, it's still dirty, cause I still have those dirty filters like Randy has. Um, but not talking about water, what my issue is, uh, I have no cell service at my home. So when, when the power goes out, which may go off tonight with this storm, the Wi-Fi goes down, I have a battery backup on, I did a couple hours of it. But once that power goes out, my Wi-Fi's down, I have no communications to the outside world through my cellphone, which is my only phone. So if I had an emergency situation, like I call nine-one-one, I can't get to her. Okay, so I'm advocating for cellphone towers in the area to improve our communications. Um, it's an issue when we lose power, and a couple weeks ago, right before the town hall in Dale Haugh, we lost power three times in one week. Each time is for more than three or four hours, right? And so I was without, you know, without power, so I was without cellphone service, and so we need cellphone towers for an emergency situation. So, I just wanted to make sure Mr. Upchurch was aware of it.
Aware of it, and as one person said, quit building homes in order to get more cell coverage, we got convinced Horizon to invest in another tower.
Exactly.
Because of the number of people in there, and after, I think we're at a couple thousand, eighteen hundred, two thousand, two thousand people. Uh, for them, but I don't know what the cost to build a several hundred foot tower, but.
But we need one definitely.
And it's not only there, it's throughout, it's, it's east, west, south, and we've got Horizon Tower in Modock, so I'm blessed, I got signals down there.
I'm just trying to raise that as, as an issue.
No, keep, keep raising, and we need to, yeah, thank you.
Just, uh, just one comment, um, and I have to go back to the water issue. One of the things that, uh, we discussed in looking at locations of a water tower at SLB, is putting it on high ground and building a tower on top of it. Uh, which would be a very expensive way to do that, because we're aware that most of our telecommunications problems, our cellphone problems, are in the northern part of the village, up in the Monticello, uh, and Savannah Point areas. So, uh, if we can, if we can properly locate a water tower and, um, and put it in, in on, on top of our cellphone tower, I think that would go a long way to fix that problem.
Speaking of towers, I'm looking at Miss Tana White here, I think, when I talk to her cell phones, she's got a spot out in her cow pasture. She says, wait a minute, I don't have a signal, let me run out into the cow pasture. And she is, uh, three seventy-eight and I'm two forty out of town, so. Listen. Oh, they told you how to get around, yeah. That's the code to your Wi-Fi. Yeah, yeah, but still, right down the road.
West Carolina doesn't talk about it for the county, so, there you go.
See if they can help you improve that, or can, uh, one last question. Yes, sir.
Libertize, uh, I've been going to county council meetings for a couple last weekends that I've lived out there, and we.
And here you are.
The discussion that we had tonight about concerns about the contract that exists for the water company, has not been the first question that I've had, this same issue on contract after contract after contract. It's my understanding that our county attorney's been here about thirty years, and he clearly has not done his job of protecting the county in these contracts. What are we gonna do about being the county attorney, as to put provisions in our contracts that protects the county from these kinds of issues? That's a critical issue for this county going forward, and it's gonna cost us tons and tons of money, trying to deal with litigation, dealing out of contracts, when we have a county attorney who is not doing his job properly. The other thing I'd like to just point out is, is a quick comment, for the folks here in SLB, Chuck's done a great job passing through now by neighborhood giving information, but most people may not know that Bernie Amby and David Mora, all are representatives of SLB, and we're lucky to have three members on the county council that are representatives of SLB in, in our county council. We need to stay in touch with them and make sure that they're aware of all of our issues, and hopefully we can get all three of them to communicate with us the way that Chuck does. Thank you, yes, sir.
One, okay, this is.
This is not a commercial, but I will let you know for those that have Horizon, um, we switched back to T-Mobile, they have a 5G Ultra. The service is phenomenal, T-Mobile, I'm just letting you know.
What's your condition?
No, I, uh.
This is a Horizon country.
Well, I know it is, and we had to switch to Horizon when we came here, we were previous to T-Mobile. So we went to Horizon for two years, and then happened to go to a T-Mobile Costco, and they said, yes, we have a 5G Ultra, and we have no issues at all, and we're leaving my cell phone.
Thanks for that information, and in closing, uh, Ms. Barnes is here, I would put her on the spot, it's pretty, I was gonna catch her EMS director, but she's left. Another important, uh, tool that the county offers is Code Red. Uh, I, I get emails, I get texts, and voice, and voicemail, all when situations occur at the county, so. If you're not on Code Red, Crystal could give you this briefly, say what they need to do, need to get signed up for Code Red.
You can go from the county website off of the number one webpage, and there's a link to the Code Red to sign up. You can receive your text messages, phone calls, and emails you care. If you have any problems, you can call myself or India White, who is our number one, um, director, uh, dispatch center. Um, and even I think Stacy does a lot of it with the water, so we're good on, because Stacy owns this project now. So, any of us would be glad to help you get signed up on it. But do remember that with water and sewer, if they sit out a certain area, you probably don't, if you're not in that area, you will not get that phone call. That's the issue, is the question, so if you're not in a certain area, they send it out to you, I think, those phones.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes, at this time, uh, I personally, once again, want to thank everyone that has come out, uh, we, again, thank, uh, Mrs. Smith and his staff, and the residents for showing up, a very good meeting. I was, we thought that it would probably be twice as many folks, but he's probably got a lot of folks staying under the air conditioning. Someone was joking, is it gonna get hotter inside, inside there than it is on the outside? It didn't, so, y'all did a great job, thank you, and, uh, our, yo, all our contact information is on our website, county's website. Uh, please text or call us, or I'm probably worse to call, but text me, I get, I read it, I've never, I never.
No, I'm just gonna round my phone, yes, sir.